There he is. Call the meeting to order. We're very fortunate and appreciative to have the Reverend Mark Carey with us this evening, Fellowship Bible Church, to lead us in an invocation. Thank you very much, sir.
Let's pray. Our Father, we're grateful that we could come before you. And first of all, acknowledge your kindness, your provision, just your abundant grace and mercy that has kept us this day in your care. Father, also thank you for these public servants. And as always, Father, we lift them up to you. Tonight, we pray, as always, for wisdom and for clarity and for insight, for even a one-mindedness, Father. Thank you for the work they do as they represent this ever-changing and growing county. And I just ask, Father, you would give them special blessing. So we commit this evening into your hands, and we're grateful, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Chairman Lofton, you lead us to the pledge, please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the island of God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Option of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
To approve as presented is a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adopt the agenda as presented. Citizen comments, agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing, does anyone have anything at all, or did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Consent agenda, are there any proposed changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out, on the consent agenda, there's a resolution dealing with the county's position on the 81 study. You have a revised resolution in front of you that was updated to reflect comments and motion made at the MPO, as well as our Transportation Committee. So that item is still on consent, but slightly modified.
Was added?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved, and second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we'll adopt the amended consent agenda. Bring us to Board of Supervisors' comments, are there any? Thank you. County officials, updated community activities, and the Public Information Officer, Mr. Chairman, thank you for being with us.
That's me. Thank you all for allowing me the time to speak with you this evening. You all know me. For those in the audience that don't know me, my name is Karen Vacchio, and I'm the Public Information Officer for Frederick County. I do want to draw your attention to the slide that's on the screen now, and have everybody save the date for our upcoming transportation forum on October 25th. Just a little public service announcement there to get us started. We're going to talk a little bit this evening about our outlets for communications, how we get information out to the public, and all of the different vehicles that we use. To give you and our friends in the audience an idea of how information is disseminated, I've created a little information highway. We're going to go on a little short trip. Generally, information begins its trip from staff to me, and it might take several exits along the way. Some information goes into publications, some is contained in media releases, some goes to our government cable channel, some hits a variety of social media sites, and nearly all information is on our website in some form. Once the information gets to me, I work with staff to determine the best course of action for the particular piece of information. Who do we want to get the information to? Who is our target audience? Some of our information, the first stop is publications, such as our financial publications, our annual financial report, and newsletters. Other publications might be our recently created recruitment brochures for human resources. All of this information in these publications does appear on our website in some form. And jobs and publications are promoted through social media. Media releases help us spread the word on a variety of topics, such as new records being set for business licenses processed by the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, awards won, and new staff members joining our team. The information from media releases appears on the homepage of our website and social We broadcast live our Board of Supervisors' meetings and our Planning Commission meetings on our government cable channel. Those meetings are rebroadcast on a particular schedule for the week following the meeting. We also utilize our government cable channel for public service announcements, such as messages from our sheriff, educational videos from fire and rescue, and testimonial videos, such as one featuring a foster parent talking about her experience as a foster family. Our Did You Know videos run on the cable channel, along with videos for events, such as the Worlds of Work, which is a partnership event of our EDA. Our government cable channel is broadcast on Comcast Channel 16, so it is only available to Comcast viewers, subscribers. But we do some crossover with our cable channel and put videos up on our YouTube channel as well. And I'm going to show you an example of the videos that you might see on both the cable channel and our YouTube channel. And this particular one is a recruitment video that we did for emergency dispatchers.
It's very much a team effort.
Yes, ma'am, there is a trailer on fire. Okay. And now where is it on fire? It's a tornado down. It looks like it's in the back of that whole shit. It looks like it's in the bedroom.
There is a lot of training involved, but you never know everything. You have to think quick on your feet.
There's nobody here. There's cars in the driveway. My voice is running over now.
I can't advise you, ma'am, but you can let your boyfriend in there. I don't want him to get hurt, okay? Okay.
People call 911 because they're having a bad day, and you have to learn to deal with that.
I see at least one car. I'm just worried somebody's in there so early in the morning.
You can't do this job by yourself. You have to work together with your partner.
We'll stay until they get here. Okay, we're gonna find a button on the leg. Okay, thank you. Goodnight, bye.
So you may see videos such as that on our cable channel or YouTube channel, and we also use them on social media sites. Let me see if I can get this to... Shoot. Sorry. Really quickly, I hit the wrong button. Scott gives me these fancy... Scott gives me these fancy things to use, you know? But next up, we are going to talk about our social media use in the county. And if you all are like me, you have a love-hate relationship with social media, and sometimes we all love to hate it. But it is a very good tool for our organization, including our constitutional officers, Frederick County Field 16, soon to be 17, different social media sites, including eight Facebook pages, four Twitter accounts, two LinkedIn accounts, two Instagram accounts, and our county-branded YouTube channel. Over 44,000 people like and follow us on those various sites. Our pages are set to the most open settings available by the platform, meaning that you might not have to have an account on that platform to see our information. For instance, if you're not on Facebook, you can still go to any of our county sites and see the information posted there. We have an average monthly reach of approximately 170,000 people through our social media sites. Social media is a place where a single image on a single platform can deliver a message to over 20,000 people. It's where a public service announcement can reach nearly 15,000 people, where a lovable bulldog can advertise smooches for sale as a fundraiser for the animal shelter, and where a lip sync video... I'm sorry, lip sync challenge video by our sheriff's office can be viewed over 300,000 times. It's where we talk about the need for foster families in our community, and where we can run a public education campaign about securing your load aimed at decreasing roadside trash. So whether we love it or hate it, or go back and forth, social media is a very effective tool for our organization as a whole. Nearly all of the information you've heard about does appear on our website in some form. Our website is our largest communications tool. Our site has approximately 1,275 active pages housing over 9,000 items. Annually, we post about 2,000 meetings and events to our website calendar. Our website gives us the ability to send e-notifications to people, and we have about 800 people signed up for that, and we're actively letting people know that that's an option. So when you see, when a media release hits our homepage, an e-notification is sent for that. When a meeting goes live on our calendar, an e-notification is sent for that. When an agenda is added to a meeting, an e-notification is sent, to keep people up to date on where we are with those types of things. Our top pages vary, and they generally include Parks and Recreation, the Treasurer, Commissioner of the Revenue, recycling, and the Sheriff's Office, depending on what time of year it is. Of course, Parks and Recreation is very popular during summer months, and the Treasurer's Office is very popular during tax time. Our website averages 210,000 page views a month. It is highly used by our constituents and staff alike. We have web editors in different departments who help maintain the information, keep the content current, and we strive very hard to keep our information as clean as possible and as easy to find as possible on our website. So collectively, that's what we do with information. That's our communication path that we take. It is all about getting the information to the public in the best way possible, all the while thinking about our target audience, that we want to see that information, and what's the best method to get it to them. We are constantly looking for new ways to leverage our current outlets so that we can reach the maximum number of people. For instance, we can't increase our number of subscribers to Comcast so that more people can see our cable channel there, but we can increase our viewers, and we're currently looking at an option to stream our cable channel on our website. And we think that will increase our viewership, and it will also encourage creation of more content. We are always looking and exploring new outlets, and we are always challenging ourselves to be creative in our attempts to get our message to our constituents. Anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Sorry. Have you considered boosting posts on Facebook, or have we done that as a county to get more followers?
We have not done it on the county proper Facebook pages, but Parks and Rec does it. I think recycling has does it, does it, and I think the animal shelter has done it.
I just think, I know, even as an elected board member, I had to go seek out the pages to like them, and I hadn't liked them previously. So if we could boost those for a few months to get more of our constituents following the page, that might help us to reach more people.
Right. We're looking at... Facebook regularly puts out credits to the different pages so that you can boost something, so we're looking at making better use of that. We ran a contest several months ago on the county Facebook page, just giving away a basket of items that had been donated by local businesses, and we added 500 people to the county Facebook page. We are currently running a contest on the recycling page where you could win a secure-your-load kit to help increase awareness of securing your load when you are hauling your debris and trash to the shelter. So, it's a cool kit. But good suggestion.
I think you're doing an amazing job.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Anyone?
Okay.
We certainly appreciate it. Well done.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for giving me the time, and if I can get the first slide to come back up and play. Nope. Scott, what have I done? There it is. We'll leave that there as a reminder for everybody to join us for the transportation.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Bring us to committee appointments. Extension leadership, Red Bud?
We're working on it, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Planning Commission at large, I'm working on that one. Just a regional airport, I'm also working on that one. I think I have potential candidates for both. Tourism Board is a dual appointment with the city. Lanny Pendleton and Shannon Moek, I hope I didn't butcher the pronunciation, are both eligible, and the city has approved both. Would the board like to handle that one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, along with the city of Winchester, approve Lanny Pendleton and Shannon Moek to fill the three-year terms.
Second motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Lanny Pendleton and Shannon... How did you pronounce it?
Moek, I think.
Moek? Hope one of us, maybe one of us got it right. Both appointed, we certainly appreciate their willingness to serve. Shenador Area Agency on Aging, we're actually looking for two candidates. The agency is looking for an at-large board member, and Frederick County is also looking for a representative to serve on the Shenador Area Agency on Aging Board. So if anyone has any thoughts about someone who might be interested, please let us know. Encourage them to contact us. Appreciate that. Twinkling and Sanitary District?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to address those appointments yet.
Thank you, sir. Bring us to committee business. Finance Committee, Supervisor Slaughter?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, September 19th. Items number five and eight were approved under Consent Agenda, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, oops.
Aye.
Nope. It'll be roll call.
Roll call.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number three, the Frederick County Public School Finance Director requested a school operating fund and general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $316,537.71. This amount represents a carryforward of unspent restricted grant funds. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number four, the Frederick County Public School Finance Director requested a school operating fund and general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $186,878.76. This amount represents a carryforward of unspent fiscal year 18 school operating funds for the purchase of a school bus and security equipment. Local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number six, the Transportation Director requested a public hearing for a development projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $9,370,435.9. This amount represents additional funds for the I-81 Bridge, Tevis Roundabout, Airport Road, Northern Y Project. No local funds are required as the project cost or a part of a revenue sharing agreement and split between VDOT and private partners. The committee recommends holding a public hearing, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll schedule the public hearing.
Item number seven, the Parks and Recreation Director requested a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $41,600 from proffer funds. This amount represents utility infrastructure at the Northwest Shorando Park. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right. That'll bring us to the public hearing. Amendment to the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution following on the board's appropriation of funds to construct a new Ailer School. There was a request to consider an additional appropriation, the amount of $7.5 million, that would be also used towards acquisition of land, design, and construction of the replacement school.
Any questions, Mr. Tierney?
Mr. Chairman, I need to read my statement.
Yes.
I want to disclose for the record, relative to this item and pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, that I am employed by Frederick County Public Schools as a teacher, and therefore I'm a member of a group who are or may be affected by the item, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to...
Let's hold the public hearing.
Hold, okay. Oh, good point. Sorry.
It's okay. I have the same problem. So are there any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Anyone? Thank you. Since the public hearing, anyone would like to comment concerning this proposed amendment to the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget? If you'd come forward, share your name. Magisterial District, limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Sean Graber, Back Creek District. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I want to throw out three words that mean a lot to me, and I hope that they mean something to you. It is trust, respect, and integrity. I trusted that this board would do the right thing when it gathered its budget in February, March, April, and May of this year. I tried to show respect, and I was hoping that supervisors would have respect for me, the taxpayer, and that there would be integrity in the process. I, however, have been sadly disappointed. You see, there's been 100% guarantee each of the last three years that the budget that was set by this board has been busted for special appropriations. This year, however, there will be two, if this is passed. If the money was spent in a matter that I could agree with, I would probably not say a word. However, in the last six weeks, I noticed the school board make a presentation that the money or the funds appropriated, the $45.5 million, would cover everything. It would cover the land, it would cover the design, it would cover the building of the building, it would cover most of the furnishings. However, it doesn't appear that there's been trust, respect, and integrity in the process. You know, I would hope that the school board would have the respect and the integrity to return the property that is known as Ailer School to this board and to the taxpayer who paid for it initially. I haven't heard any discussion of that. I have heard that one of our present board members have offered to vote yes for this proposal if those properties are returned to the Board of Supervisors. Now Bernie Madoff may be laughing in jail for some of his rings of exploitation and extortion, but to me, my friends, the taxpayer paid for this school the first time. To expend any additional monies to get the school for the second time, as one supervisor has proposed, is simple extortion. It is exploiting we, the taxpayer, one more time, and in my opinion, it is fraud. We need to stop this charade once and for all. Please vote no on the $7.5 million of additional spending. Thank you kindly.
Anyone else? Anyone?
Hello, my name is McKenna Southern, and I live in the Opecan District. First, I would like to thank the board for approving the building of a new Ailer Middle School. However, I feel that we need the extra space in the new school because the population in our area is continuously growing, and if we don't have the additional room in the new school, then we'll be repeating the same mistakes, and in only a few short years, we'll be here spending millions more dollars to add in addition to the school. But that can be avoided now if you approve the extra funding to build a school capable of serving 900 students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Southern. Well done. Ms. Carr?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Joy Kirk. I'm a resident of the Back Creek District and a 24-year teacher in Frederick County Public Schools. I currently serve our two largest middle schools. I serve Jameswood Middle School, and I also serve Admiral Byrd Middle School. Both of those schools exceed population. So the reality is, when we open the new Ailer Middle School, we will need to do rezoning so that we can balance our numbers. Unfortunately, those are not the only students who will be served by that school. As you just heard, and as you know, our community continues to grow. When I travel between Jameswood and Byrd, all I have to do is hit Paper Mill, and there's more townhouses being built. When I travel home from Admiral Byrd, if I continue up Route 50, I see there, off to my left, more homes are going to be built. We are a growing community, and we're growing because of homes that you have decided to approve. So I ask you, not just for the 700 students or the 900 students, I ask you for all of the students that will be serviced by that school. I ask you for the more than 900 students that at some point will be in that school while we wait for the fifth school to be built, that you appropriate this additional funds so that we can build the best school, the longest-lasting school, and the school that will serve us well into the future when it exceeds capacity, as we know, our schools do, often do, before we build a replacement or a new middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I stand.
Good evening, I'm Brandy Hammond. I live in Shawnee District. Just to reflect a little bit on what Ms. Kirk said, we are continuing to grow, so I definitely support the additional funding for a larger Ailer Middle School. Just in the Byrd District, we have Freedom Manor under construction with 190 units, Madison Village, 598 units, Heritage Commons is planned for 645 units. These are in the center of the Byrd attendance zone, and Byrd is already over capacity, as we know. And as Ms. Kirk stated, the attendance zone will have to shift, pushing some students to Jameswood Middle, which is also already overcrowded, and to Ailer, which 140,000 feet will not be large enough. In addition, in the Ailer District, we have the Village at Middletown, 108 residential units, Village at Stevens City, 91 units, Southern Hills, Phase Two, 130 units, and Cross Point, which is shared between the two schools, 1,578 units planned. I'm really here tonight as a concerned parent. I've been here before, but I continue to be concerned about the overcrowded conditions that both my daughters continue to experience. I don't have daughters at Ailer, but my youngest daughter is now at Byrd, and my eldest daughter is now at Shorando. My youngest daughter experienced very overcrowded conditions at Armel, and of course, Armel was ignored for funding last year completely. I still have concerns there. My daughter at Shorando is experiencing overcrowded conditions there. Again, other funding that was denied by this board last year, and that is still needed. My daughter at Byrd this year in seventh grade, things are different. Now, they now have one-way hallways. It's sort of a roundabout situation. because students can't go both ways, it's too crowded. And even with that, they're still, she's still feeling like she's getting pushed around, very crowded conditions. It's just not adequate for my daughters or for any students in the county. And by denying the additional funding for a larger Byrd, that's going to continue. During my daughter's years at Byrd, it's always been said, we have to go to band concerts in shifts. You know, it'd be great to support the other grade levels, but we can't. We have to go on shifts, there's not enough room, that's not okay. And from what I understand, when Sharando was built, several years later, they added on. So as a taxpayer, I'm very much opposed to building a small school and then just costing me as a taxpayer more money when you build on later. There's been discussions about adding on, building on. That costs a lot more in the long run than if you just build it large enough for the growing numbers and the already overcrowded conditions. So please, consider funding at least the additional seven point five million and even though it's not currently being requested, a new high school and additions to Armel. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Sorry, childcare fell through. I'm Carrie Anne Kite of the Shawnee District. Yesterday in the Star, a VDOT representative was quoted as saying about twenty-five hundred homes are planned within a two-point-three mile radius of Exit three-seventeen. The Fitch and Associates report that was approved at the last supervisor meeting showed that the growth in the UDA portion of the county is comprised of a younger family demographic. Deciding how to fund our county and its infrastructure is not an easy task. You are using growth reports to support road planning and fire and rescue planning, but stopping short on school planning. These independent agencies have documented our growth and have nothing to do with our schools. They corroborate the need for adding a capacity to our infrastructure, including our schools. Both geographical areas I mentioned are served by three of our county schools, two of which are already overcrowded. As the east side of the county grows according to the comprehensive plan, we need to be forward-thinking about how we also plan our schools. One of the maps on the comprehensive plan shows the area for a potential fifth middle school in the landfill area of the county. Now, if we build a smaller Ailer School now, then that school will be needed sooner rather than later. Much has been noted about the proposed square footage of the school. The school board presented a document showing their curriculum and spaces needed to provide that curriculum. The results is a school roughly the size of Admiral Byrd Middle School, which has never been considered excessive in this community. Why are you suggesting we go smaller in the area of our county with the largest growth? How can we equally serve our students with unequal school environments? Discussion about educational philosophy was brought up at the last supervisor meeting. Both the Virginia Middle School Association and the Association for Middle Level Education recommend the teen model as the most effective for this age group. This is the model our schools use to teach our middle schoolers and they are choosing architecture practices to best support this type of learning. The philosophy used in our middle schools is the best practice. This model has put us in the top quarter of Virginia according to niche rankings and in the top percent of the nation. The school board has defended its space requirements in regard to their curriculum. They alone dictate the education philosophy of our school system. They will build a school that fits their curriculum and they will use the Virginia Department of Education Guide Loans to do so. That is their job as an independently elected board. I appreciate that members of this board have different ideas on public education and how our schools are delivering education, but in the end, that decision lies solely with the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Dr. Savine? You'll have to get a little firmer with it. There we go. Good evening, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm David Savine, Superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools and resident of the Shawnee Magisterial District. The school board originally took action in February requesting fifty-two million for the Ailer project. Tonight's public hearing regarding the Board of Supervisors providing an additional seven point five million dollars for the Ailer Replacement Project, if approved, would provide the school board with the initial amount requested plus inflation. This would appropriately position our school division to address future student growth at the middle school level and relieve overcrowding at Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School. On behalf of the school board, I respectfully request that you take action this evening to fund the additional seven point five million for the Ailer project. At its August twenty-first meeting, the school board discussed and reached consensus on its intent to surplus the old Ailer facility upon completion of the replacement project. This was communicated in writing to the Board of Supervisors and for your reference, I will provide to the clerk with an additional courtesy copy of the memorandum from Mr. DeHaven sent to Dr. Lamanna sharing the supervisor's request regarding the current Ailer property and the former transportation center, as well as Dr. Lamanna's memorandum dated September the eighteenth. That was written in response to Chairman DeHaven's memorandum. I'm also providing another courtesy copy of the minutes of the school board's meeting that occurred on August twenty-first. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you do. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sophia Gunting and I'm from the Back Creek District. I am now a freshman at Sharando High School. I have a sister at Ailer and a sister at Middletown Elementary School. I'd like to first thank you for approving the rebuild of Ailer. It took a long time, but finally, you took one step by approving the rebuild. I would like to thank you, I would like to take you one more step by approving the one hundred and sixty thousand square foot school instead of the one hundred and forty thousand square foot school. We need a school that is built for the future, not now. You have heard that saying over and over again, but the reason why we keep saying that is because we don't need another school like Jameswood High School, Milbrook, Sharando, Byrd, Jameswood Middle School, Armel, Bass Hoover, Indian Hollow, Orchard View, Redwood Run and Stonewall. Sounds like a lot of schools, right? Well, that's over sixty percent of the schools in this county and they all share one thing in common, they're all overcrowded. We don't need that percentage of schools that are overcrowded to go up even more by adding another small school that will end up overcrowded. So please rethink your decision and build a one hundred and sixty thousand square foot school. Teachers, staff members, parents, students, future students, past students, regular people and even me, an eighth grade student who hates speaking in front of people and still to this day does, have come in front of you fighting for a new Ailer Middle School. We have spent lots of time and tears trying to do this, not only for us, not only for our families, but for the county. Eight months, eight months of running around to come here to say a quick three-minute speech about a school, a school that people think of as a joke, a school with mold and asbestos in the walls, a school that is falling apart as we speak. This school is important to me and my community. We just got a letter two weeks ago at Sharando saying that there's not asbestos at Ailer and was that a conversation starter? So many people were saying that they were sorry for us, the kids who went to Ailer. They were sorry that we had to go to a school in that condition and spend three years there. In math, the other day, a girl was having an allergy attack. She said that they started in the sixth grade, she went to Ailer. Ailer causes problems as small as headaches to breathing issues. We are upset that it took you fifteen years to finally bring up Ailer. We all try to come to these meetings constantly, but we constantly have things going on. We don't know what else to say anymore, we don't know what to say to make you change your mind. We have given, we have already given all the information that we can. We have repeated ourselves over and over again. We are kids coming in front of grown adults expressing our opinion. This is something I will never forget and I hope that you don't forget either. It is hard for us kids and even adults to come up here and say this kind of stuff. I'm used to giving small presentations in front of my classmates. Now I'm telling grown adults why they should build a bigger school. Also, just because a building does not teach students, doesn't mean that it doesn't impact the students. A building that us students and teachers are in for seven to twelve hours a day are making students and teachers sick and causing breathing issues. I don't, I understand that buildings don't teach kids, but the amazing and hard-working teachers in Frederick County do. They deserve more, so please think about those eight months of hard work and dedication from us and rebuild Ailer at one hundred and sixty thousand square feet.
Very well done, thank you very much. Anyone else, yes, ma'am? Yeah, one moment, come on ahead. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Gunting, I'm from the Back Creek District. I'm a sixth grade student at Ailer. I'm here today to talk about the amount of money you want to vote on for the fund of Ailer is way too small. We need the right size for the students who will be going to Ailer in the future. More houses are being built and we all know that there are going to be even more students going to Ailer. Then the Ailer work will be very overpopulated and people will ask you to build on to Ailer. Most people learn best when they're moving around, doing things in the classroom and I'm guessing everyone would love to do that without tripping over a desk like I've done many times before. We would love if we could walk in the halls and get to our class on time because the halls are actually big enough for everyone. We need the extra funding to do that, we need it, not want it, but need it. If everything was just enough, like you want to fund for the school, where would the world be? Please think about that before voting on the amount of Ailer. Please think about this speech and all the other great speeches, thank you.
Good job, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Tuckash and I'm a resident of the Shawnee District as well as a teacher at Ailer Middle School. I first like to thank you for funding the replacement Ailer Middle School that was so desperately needed. I'm here tonight to ask you to allocate an additional seven million dollars so we can build a school large enough to serve nine hundred students and meet the needs of our growing community. At the current rate of funding, our new school would be nearly at capacity when opened. Right now, as you know, two of the four middle schools in Frederick County are overcrowded. My husband is a teacher at Byrd where they do not even have enough lockers to support their student population. Underfunding the Ailer replacement when we know other schools are overcapacity is fiscally irresponsible. Our county is growing, we need to be proactive and build a school that's designed to accommodate our growing student population rather than build only for today's needs. My husband and I recently moved from West Virginia to Stevens City for two reasons. Number one, to become part of the community that we teach in. Secondly, to have our daughter take advantage of the excellent education that Frederick County provides. Our neighborhood is living proof of this population growth we are seeing in the schools. It's filled with young families, the majority of families we have met are from Northern Virginia area as well as Kentucky, Ohio, Massachusetts and Maryland. It should come as no surprise that every parent wants the best for their child and education is at the forefront. Education is the backbone of a strong community, it leads to strong jobs, which brings more tax revenue. We should not repeat the mistakes of Sharando and Milbrook by building too small. Please consider allocating an additional seven million dollars in funding now so that we can save money in the future and give our kids the best education possible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Mara Gunting from the Back Creek District. Thank you for your recent votes to begin the process to build a new Ailer Middle School. As a concerned parent, I started attending meetings months ago to gather as much information as I could to be informed on all sides. I've been volunteering as a PTSO board member to meet the teachers, staff and students to get another perspective from inside the school. I've also, or I've been able to see that Ailer is just more than numbers on paper. From all of this, I think the most compelling information that I got came from the joint meeting held at Ailer. I watched list after list of all the reductions of necessities for a school at a hundred and forty thousand square feet. Things I remember from that meeting while comparing the hundred and forty thousand square foot to a hundred and sixty were the lack of van storage, coral space storage, collaborative spaces, extremely small guidance offices, agricultural, tech and foreign language spaces. I'm confused why a hundred and sixty thousand square foot is considered too big. Admiral Byrd's building is a hundred and sixty thousand square foot for nine hundred students and it is not too big or extravagant. Actually, they're overflowing and could be helped by a bigger Ailer to redistrict some of the students. I've previously listed all the approved housing developments coming to our county and in my Back Creek District. More kids are coming and where will they go? I know it may be difficult to predict how, exactly how many students will be walking into the doors of the new Ailer School in two thousand twenty-one, but at least with them comes more taxpayers. Are we predicting the additional taxpayers when we calculate how much money can be put into the new school? I'm urging you to vote for the additional seven point five million that's being proposed tonight to pass. This school needs to be built big enough to hold the student population in two thousand twenty-one and beyond with the needs of our community. Thank you for allowing my girls to participate and have their voices heard. It's been a great learning experience, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone who would like to speak? Anyone? Last call? We'll close the public comment portion. How would the board like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Trail?
I move to approve the amendment to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year budget with an additional supplemental appropriation of seven point five million dollars for acquisition of land, design and construction of a replacement Ailer Middle School.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Trail?
Tonight, we consider an additional appropriation of seven point five million dollars for the Ailer Middle School project. In January, the school board made the initial request for a fifty-two million dollar appropriation to build a new school. After eight months of meetings in which dozens of questions were asked and answered, we appropriated forty-five point five million dollars for the project. At our last meeting, I moved to set this public hearing to consider additional funding. My motivation for this additional funding is simple. Our county is growing exponentially and it is irresponsible to build a school too small for our needs. New developments are popping up every day, as we just heard during the public hearing. In a Winchester Star article, VDOT stated that we have over twenty-five hundred new residential units planned in the vicinity of the Exit three-seventeen alone. The report by Fitch and Associates, accepted by our board on September twelfth, also corroborates this growth. We need to stop looking at the county in sections and instead look at the big picture. Building a smaller school during this time of growth would be unwise. As families move into the area, we need appropriately sized schools to service them. Mr. Dunn often mentions the debt that we will accumulate in the coming years with new schools. What he doesn't mention is that as people are moving to our county and paying taxes, the county will experience a natural increase in revenue with a larger tax base. Furthermore, many of these new developments under construction are advertising homes starting in the low three hundred thousands. Those homes will generate significant revenue at a minimum one thousand eight hundred thirty dollars annually. These new constituents deserve to have schools that their students want to attend, schools that aren't overcrowded or falling apart simply because of age. It is more fiscally responsible to build a larger school now rather than wait to add an addition or build another school in a few years. Admiral Byrd Middle and Jameswood Middle are both busting at the seams with students and both overcapacity. At Byrd, they don't even have enough lockers for every student, as another constituent mentioned. This will only get worse in the coming years as we continue to experience growth. As a social studies teacher, I teach students the past mistakes of individuals and nations in an effort to avoid repeating history. I hope to do the same here tonight. Let's quickly reflect on the past decisions of our county that are pertinent to this decision. In nineteen ninety-three, we opened the brand-new Sharando High School. September fifteenth enrollment of that year was one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine students with a capacity of only one thousand two hundred and fifty. This means we opened at ninety percent capacity. We built too small. Two years later, an addition was begun that opened in nineteen ninety-six. The addition cost ten dollars and ninety-eight cents more per square foot than the original school. The cost of waiting to add an addition instead of building larger initially was one hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars in nineteen ninety-six. That is tax mare bunny that was simply wasted due to a short-sighted decision to build a smaller school. Additionally, the school division started work on Milbrook High School in two thousand and it opened in two thousand three. So just like I said at our last meeting, that's two high schools and an addition in one decade. The need for a fourth high school is undeniable and the need will continue to grow as new families move into the area. The growth cited previously by VDOT is all happening in Stonewall District. If you recall, prior to my time on the board, there was a request for a twelfth elementary school in this area, Stone Bridge. This was not just a request, it was a movement. Those constituents came out in force to fight for their children to attend a school that wasn't overcrowded. Some of these parents are still coming and speaking to us because they know that the crowded issues at Stonewall are just beginning. They will enter an overcrowded Jameswood Middle and an overcrowded Jameswood High School unless we do some planning now. Also, to put it in perspective, while Stone Bridge is under construction, the school board has plans to add two additional trailers at the elementary school because the area is still growing. The entire third grade is in trailers and class sizes in fourth grade are twenty-eight or twenty-nine and houses are still being built in Stone Bridge. To put it simply, delays cost us even more money. In a letter to the Board of Supervisors from Dr. Lamanna, Chairman of the Frederick County School Board, dated September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, he states, "I will state explicitly the intent to declare Robert E. Ailer Middle School property and building as surplus once the replacement Ailer Middle School, Robert E. Ailer Middle School, excuse me, has been completed and occupied. This should clear up that concern from our board. As elected officials, we are answerable to our constituents. It is our job to represent them and fulfill their vision for our community." At our July twenty-fourth joint score- At our July twenty-fourth joint sco- school board and board supervisor meeting, Mr. Dunn stated that everybody wants to do what's best for our students. Since January, the vast majority of constituents, including many not in the Ailer attended zone, have supported a larger appropriation and a larger school. I think that the school board, the constituents who spoke at this public hearing, and all the constituents have who have spoken on this issue since January have made it abundantly clear what is best for our students, more funding and a larger school. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anyone? I'm lost.
If I may. Thank everyone for coming out with their comments. I for one struggle with a decision like this and I'll I'll give you some background as to why I struggled with this decision. In October, using the Virginia Department of Education recommended standards, the school board chose to reduce the capacity of all the schools in Frederick County using the Virginia Department of Education recommended standards. In January, the school board brought before us, the school administration, the school board brought before us some options for replacing the Ailer Middle School. One of those options was to replace a replacement building estimate for new building at one hundred and forty thousand square feet, two hundred and eighty dollars per square foot, thirty-nine million dollars. If I look back at the Virginia Department of Education recommended standards, I find that according to a middle, a prototypical middle school according to the Virginia Department of Education recommended standards falls just below a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, which includes classrooms, other areas, hallways, electrical uh services. It seems to be a complete package. At a hundred and forty thousand square feet, that could be built for thirty-nine million dollars by the schools, that's almost a twenty percent increase over the Virginia Department of Education recommended standards for a prototypical middle school for nine hundred students. If I look further at the information provided by the school board, and we can see has been pointed out, James Wood Middle School is a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Admiral Byrd's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. The new Frederick County Middle School is a hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet, all with a capacity of nine hundred students. So I'm having some difficulty here reconciling why we keep jumping from one to the other to the other when we talk about building schools for nine hundred s- capacity students. Why don't we have a prototypical school that we can use and be confident that that is going to be the best method for teaching our children in an environment that's conducive to learning? I was still eh kind of put off because the information provided that was supposed to support this collaborative learning excess space in the new schools was partially supported by a study that was done in the United Kingdom with about four hundred and fifty students. I'm not sure why that was entered into the discussion. Number one, I have no idea how the United Kingdom trains their students or teaches their students and quite frankly, I don't care. Because if we look at the results of the education system in Frederick County, the United States, of the people who become scientists, doctors, lawyers, I think that we far exceed, no detriment to the UK, but I think we far exceed results based upon our education system as opposed to theirs. So again, I'm not sure why that was thrown into the mix. It it again just goes to confuse when you look at all these facts. We're talking about extra cost. At our last meeting in July, when we had a joint meeting with the school board and the board of supervisors, a comment was made that, you know, it's only additional money. That there should not be a burden on the county to provide that extra dollars if we want to provide our students with this excellent learning experience. I bristled at that remark because it's it's like, well, it's only money. Well, yes, it's only money. It's only taxpayer money from those people who go out here and work every day to come home and support their families and the amenities that they enjoy, whether it's schools, public safety, fire department, whatever. So every dollars are hard-earned dollars for most of the constituents in the county and I think it is my charge to make sure those dollars are used wisely. So with all that in mind, I can't support the extra seven and a half million dollars because again, we're going from a hundred and forty thousand square feet to a hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet, all with a nine hundred student capacity. I am told by the school board, I had the information, I'm looking at it right here. Replacement building estimate for new building at a hundred and forty thousand square feet, nine hundred student capacity. We are allowing a almost twenty percent increase in that square footage and even more th- than the state recommends. So if we're gonna use state recommendations for one area of education, why are we switching to a non-recommended standard from the Department of Education? If we're gonna be consistent, let's be consistent. That's what I find so difficult about this whole system and I will not vote for the extra seven and a half million dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
You wanna go, Ms. McCarthy?
Surprise McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I'd like to start by saying that this is a dilemma that we're facing, but it's not just a dilemma about school capacity and I think it's important that we look at the entire dilemma that we face. And that dilemma is, it's been mentioned that there's a lot of growth coming to our county and yes, while we may have some tax revenue increases with the growth, the it seems to me that the costs of the county far outweigh the the revenues that will be received from those additional persons that are moving into our community. So it's a dilemma. It's how do we pay for the hundreds of millions of dollars of services that the county is faced with over the next decade or so? So for me, it's a dilemma of how do we try to find a way to work together as a board of supervisors and a school board in order to find solutions to the dilemma. I I thought one of the ways that we could do that was to work out a a compromise where the school board says we will give back certain properties that the citizens of Frederick County have paid for that we may not need to utilize in return for getting additional funding that it didn't vote for the first time around. It's a compromise. It's trying to find a solution to a dilemma. At the last meeting, I asked that the school board come back to us with a written commitment or resolution stating their commitment to surplus Ailer and potentially a portion of the old school bus depot so that could be used for the citizens of the Gainesboro District for a very much needed convenience site, um which we haven't been able to find the property in order to do, which happens to be, the bus depot happens to be directly across the street from our current citizen center. So my hope was that we could find some way of compromising, finding a solution to a dilemma. Um it's been stated twice tonight that we received a letter from the um school school board chairman committing to uh surplus those items. But as I mentioned last week, that the intent to do something is not the same as a commitment to do something. And I thought that was a very simple gesture to ask the school board to put something in writing committing. There's been no official vote taken and as a matter of fact, the official minutes of the school board from two meetings ago say no official action has been taken by the school board, which would indicate to me that that means that there's no binding commitment, however good the intentions are because this board may not be sitting here, you know, two years from now. The school board members who are making the commitment may not be sitting there two mi- two years from now, so it's not a commitment. And because of that, um trying to reach out and work on some type of a solution, a a middle ground, that not being done, I cannot vote for the additional funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Surprise or done?
First of all, um thank you for coming. I'm just gonna share some thoughts on trying to where we're coming from and why, that's where I'm coming from and why. One of the comments was made in the public hearing, can you hear me? One of the comments was made in the public hearing was the need for a hundred sixty thousand square foot school versus a hundred forty thousand, et cetera. The current Ailer has about a hundred thirteen thousand square feet and the capacity that the school board has set for that is seven hundred and twenty students. So that comes out to about a hundred and fifty-six square feet per student. Take that same hundred fifty-six square feet per student, you multiply it times nine hundred, you get about a hundred and forty thousand square feet. So that's the logic behind the hundred and forty thousand. To the person that made the comment about the increased growth in the community, one of the items that was posed to the schools was are you open or willing to have a much larger school than nine hundred? And as many of you know, I'd gone to Loudoun County where they had a school for thirteen fifty-four that had costed fifty-three million, which inflated today would be the same as fifty-seven, fifty-eight. But the school board, I believe at least one member on this board feels that that large a elementary school is inappropriate and I can respect that. So that kind of took that off the table. When I first started out, one of the options was for a renovation in addition to Ailer. The cost was like thirty-three million dollars. And Dr. Angelo made a comment during a um a meeting and he said that he had been a former principal and I believe he had been there and he'd gone through a three or four year, I don't remember the number, but I remember his comment. Renovation, which was very difficult for students. So that was one reason to give me pause to say, fine, building a new school would be better than a renovation. Then Dr. uh then Supervisor McCarthy made a comment and his comment was, what if you have cost overruns, Blaine? And instead of having thirty-three or thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, that was a good comment too. So that caused me to say, fine, like Supervisor Lofton, I think you can build a school for forty, forty-one, forty-two. The number was forty-five and a half and I could accept that. So I'm trying to work with the school board from my perspective. That's my thought process. So I do appreciate Dr. Angelo, your comments. Um I do appreciate Supervisor McCarthy, your comments. We're trying to find something that works. Um so that's one of the reasons why I'm at the forty-five and a half, not the uh additional seven and a half. To the common on taxpayers, from everything I know, additional people that move into this county are a cost to the county. They do not increase the tax revenue. Planning Department says in a study they did three years ago, they're approximately the capital cost for the county is nineteen point something million. That's three years old. If you adjust that for inflation, it's probably the neighborhood twenty thousand or so. So those taxes come in, the cost to the county for that additional um person, a family coming in um help weighs that. To the person that made the comment about inflation costs, construction inflation costs, which run three to six percent. Each year that we do not, um if we postpone something, our debt service goes down about eleven to twelve million dollars. So just use the figure twelve million dollars for a moment. If you postpone something for three years, our debt service goes down about thirty-six million dollars, which gives us the ability then to borrow money and not have an increase in taxes to re-borrow that. So these are the things that are, you know, we're weighing on and we may disagree on some of this, but at least it's an explanation on where we're coming from and why. I think that's why I can say at the moment, Mr. Chairman. If any of you have additional comments or suggestions, that's fine. We will talk about a meals tax, we'll talk about profit revision, which is a long-term solution, not a short-term solution. And that and some type of a tax adjustment is probably where we're gonna where we're gonna end up, but for today, I'm not sold on the seven and a half million dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Just to start out, uh I will be voting in favor of this motion. I'm I'm disappointed that the two bodies couldn't come together with some sort of a resolution. And hopefully, uh board member, Mr. McCarthy would have felt better about that. But that didn't happen. But based on the information that that I've obtained from school officials, lending institutions and construction professionals in our area and outside of our area, and I'm in the construction business, the current forty-five million, five hundred thousand dollars, the approved funds, well, it'll build the building. It 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 will build a school. And um it will take about two years or more to get that school up. And based on the information that I've gathered, I don't believe that the uh forty-five million, five hundred thousand will build a school. It's gonna be large enough for the population that's growing in my district, which is the Opecan District, at this particular time. With the predicted uh construction costs and I and I know Supervisor Dunn was just talking about that, figure I came up was around four percent uh annual increase in construction costs. And again, I'm directly involved in that construction industry. So when you take that and you look down the road and you say, okay, I build the school and it's gonna take two and a half years, two and a half years later, I'm gonna put an addition on, you're now sixteen or so percent of cost increase just for construction. That's not for the inner workings of the school, um desks, books, and so forth and so on. We're we're really very fortunate right now. We didn't have this many, many, several years, ten years, eight years ago, but we have a a good economy right now. And uh our bond markets with the state and our loan markets are in good shape. But four years down the road, I don't know exactly what's gonna happen with that. I I don't have a crystal ball. But there could be some significant changes. Those are political situations and uh subject to change and if those change, it would be very difficult uh to even go back maybe and and for the state to even be able to run these bond markets. I'm a taxpayer, you're taxpayers, all the board members are taxpayers and and I've always told people, I said that you elected me to do the best I possibly can with the money that you're willing to to give. Uh and and I will continue to do that. But I really think that my taxpayers, I I think the taxpayers in Frederick County, but specifically the the ones I've spoken to in my district uh are better served. If we go ahead and and build a school that will meet the needs uh in the next two to four years rather than waiting and putting an addition on that school and and spending more money for it. It just, folks that I've talked to don't seem to think that's a good idea. Uh I haven't talked to everybody in my district, but I've talked to a lot. So I I just think that uh we're better to to move ahead in this direction at this time rather than uh waiting and seeing what happens. Again, I'll say what I've said before. Been in Frederick County a long time. I've never seen a school built that, once it got built, it was completely empty. Probably the closest one that was Green Greenwood Elementary and that was, came right at the time of the bubble burst. Uh but if you look at it now, it's certainly at capacity. So we need schools and and I I feel like we need to move ahead with this uh with this Ailer school. It needs to be the right size. Thank you.
Anyone else? Surprise trial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh so I'd like to address a couple of points. First, uh Mr. Lofton, you talked about taxpayers and being good stewards of their money. Well, tonight alone, we had one person speak against this allocation and I think nine speak, yes, nine speak for it. That's just this evening. That doesn't count the all the meetings that we've had in the last eight months where we've had countless taxpayers um come before us and say, build a larger school. I have actually had the pers- the number of emails that I've received saying, don't build a larger school, I think tallies at two the entire eight months, whereas I've received dozens saying, build a new school. So there's that. Um and it is their money that we're spending. Um in terms of a postponement for, I believe that was Mr. Dunn. If we postpone this um in order to have, you know, to be able to borrow more money, our students can't handle a postponement. I mean, postponement of three to four years is an entire middle school or high school career for those children. That's an entire middle or high school career where they are in those crowded hallways that some of our constituents were talking about, in those classes that are huge. That's their entire education in middle and high school if we postpone. Mr. Lofton, you talked about um standards of quality. So from a teaching perspective, I'll tell you. Standards of quality from Virginia Department of Education are the absolute bare minimum. It's like having a family of four in a Toyota Corolla with manual locks instead of a family of four comfortably in a Toyota Camry with automatic locks and a little more room. That's what we're talking about here. Standards of quality is like what you absolutely bare minimum have to have. We offer our children an excellent education here in Frederick County that is We offer our children an excellent education here in Frederick County that is above that. We have programs like the Ag program. At Ailer Middle School alone, both the music for choral and band, they're blue ribbon schools at the state level every year that I've been there. So that's eight years that they've been blue ribbon school, um, programs, which is incredible. We offer these things to our student, which research has showed gives a well-rounded student. If you have these extracurricular programs and elective activities, students do better in their core classes, then they are more productive citizens later in life. They come back to Frederick County, they pay more money in taxes because they make more money at their job. It's just common sense. It's a, it's rolling on. Basically, the taxpayers want us to spend this. That's all I really have to say. They got up here, they're shaking their heads right now, I can see them. They want us to appropriate this money. And I don't understand why we are choosing not to do what the taxpayers want us to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Briefly?
It will be brief. Ms. Trout, I was not advocating the postponement. I was just making the comment that if a project gets postponed, the debt service goes down to eleven to twelve million dollars a year. I was looking for ways that the school board possibly could offset the cost of this. That did not occur. So I was not looking to postpone this, but I'm just providing this because we're going to have this discussion as we go forward on future projects. Thank you.
Ms. Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, to trust Supervisor Trout's comments. She made a comment earlier, people are moving into the county, they're buying these new houses, they're paying taxes, we should be having a lot of extra revenue. And she admitted. The tax on a three hundred thousand dollar house is about one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars a year. I suppose that Supervisor Trout knows how much it costs to educate one student per year. The cost of a house doesn't even begin to cover the cost of educating, educating one child. I go back to, you say we minimum standards. Then if the Virginia Department of Education feels like that kids aren't going to get an exceptional education, they should up the standards. And right now, what's being proposed, one hundred and forty thousand square feet is about twenty percent more than the minimum. So you talk about the different Ag programs and other programs like one in Ailer. Right now, seven hundred, well, not seven hundred and twenty kids because Ailer isn't full yet. But all those programs are going on, and one hundred and fifty-six square feet, as Supervisor Dunn has, has aptly noted, and that's what would be in a one hundred and forty thousand square foot school. So if they're receiving an excellent education now, why would a bigger school make it even more excellent education? I have said, I believe the collaborative learning area. I'm just not a believer in that yet. And to talk about the residents here, we have nine residents here. I can't tell you how many residents. We must travel in obviously different social circles. I have yet to have one resident taxpayer come to me. And I have people, as you do, stop you at lunch, on the street, in, in Walmart, if you shop in Walmart. I have yet to have one say, give the school all the money they want. Not they need, but all the money they want. But I do have many more people than are here that show up and say, the school has enough, that school is big enough, it, it more than meets the minimum standards, so they should be able to live with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm going to take a turn. I, I think that we have beat this one to death. I think it's way past time that we trust the school board to continue to do what's in our students' best interest with the money that we manage to be, to be able to give them. As good stewards of the taxpayers' money, that's our responsibility. They have continually delivered excellence to us for what, what we have spent. It's time to trust them to spend whatever we appropriate for them wisely, to trust them to surplus what we move out of in a timely way, as they have said they would. They have continued to work with us from day one on additional space to build a new convenience site at Auburn. They have always owned the existing site that we've used for many years. It's never been a concern, never been a problem. It's time to do what is in the best interest of our community. Big picture, everything is pretty ridiculously expensive these days. Anyone else? Anyone?
Call the question.
Go.
Sorry? Call the question. Just, I'm going to vote.
You sent a couple of questions, is what I heard.
Call the question, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, that was exactly where I was heading. All right, Supervisor McCarthy?
No.
Supervisor Schlotter? Supervisor Wells?
Yes.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion fails, and this is wrong. That will bring us to board liaison reports. Are there any? Citizen comments on any issue? Anyone?
Sean Raiber, Back Creek District. Again, thank you, Board, for your last vote. I greatly appreciate it as a taxpayer. You know, I, I felt a little bit of frustration as I heard some of the arrogance that was mentioned this evening towards some of the fellow supervisors. We do fund our students approximately one hundred and thirty-six percent of what the school, what the state says the school should be funded per student, which is well and above the state minimum standards. I am very grateful for the comments and the considerable research that was done by many of you on the board and was exhibited tonight. I greatly appreciate that. Regarding a comment that was made by Ms. Trout of the parents and the folks commenting on the new school, I would be happy to share with this board, any members of the media present tonight, or anybody who would like to ask, some Facebook posts that have been sent out from the school board during school time or instructional period. It's twelve, hold on here a second. It was at twelve ten PM, July twenty-fourth, encouraging parents to come and speak. I don't know that the taxpayer has that database of folks that they can reach out to and tell them, hey, you need to come to the board of supervisors meeting and voice your opinion. I don't have that. If they are truly using, and the site that I have shows it came from Frederick County Public Schools, the official Facebook site, county resources or appointing somebody who is being funded by my tax dollars for political action, that is wrong. And I believe that that is occurring, as what I can show you from emails that I'd be happy to share with anyone tonight. We have got to look at what people are saying and doing and, and what us taxpayers actually think. And to make the assumption that because you have X number of emails, and I don't know that you gave a mention of how many were in support of it, I think is a false number. Because when you have an opportunity to push out information misguided, to, to push a group of individuals to make a, to make an appearance where the opposite party doesn't have that same opportunity at taxpayer expense is wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms., Ms. Kirk was standing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joy Kirk, and I am a resident of the Back Creek District. I'm also a teacher. One of my jobs as a teacher is to mediate. I hope, moving forward, that our two boards can work on the respect, the trust, and the integrity. All of you are our elected officials. All of you were voted into positions because people trusted you and respected you. I hope you begin listening to each other because I feel that that is where our communication is letting down. Too many other voices are entering into the conversation. Constituents have a time and place to be heard and a means by which to be heard. But the most important thing is when there are questions, to turn to your partner on the other board and listen and trust. Because it is with that trust that we will build a stronger community. It is with the respect that you give your respective board member, school board member, that we will grow. It is time for Frederick County to let this issue go and for us to move forward. But we all know that in a few months, the capital improvement plan will be before us and a new school and a new issue. And I hope that we can move forward as a community and as one, not always agreeing, but always recognizing that having differences is part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Savine.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, David Savine, Superintendent Frederick County Public Schools, resident, excuse me, resident of the Johnny District. I want to take just a moment to appropriately recognize our students here tonight. I think tonight and over the last eight months, our students have come out on their own time. They've been so articulate and poised, and they've come out and given their perspective, and you can tell they've done their research, they've been informed. So I'm very proud of them. I know in not too long from now, many of these students will be taking care of us. And I believe we can all agree that we are in very good hands. We have much to be proud of in Frederick County. And I, I recognize that we all have very busy schedules. I invite you to come out, to take time to visit our schools, talk with our students, talk with our teachers, experience the rich learning experiences that are occurring in our schools each and every day. And yes, there are some challenging situations. Yes, we have overcrowding that we're dealing with. But our teachers and our students are very special. And I want you to be a part of, of that experience. I extend that invitation. And we will continue to work together to build a stronger Frederick County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think I can speak for the board. We've always been very proud of our student body, and particularly those young folks who have come out and shared with us and done such an exemplary job. Well done. Anyone else? Anyone? Last call. Close the public comment portion. Board of supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Trout.
Just like to make one quick comment. Yes, I did talk about a three hundred thousand dollar house only giving us one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars in revenue. Costs, you know, thirteen thousand dollars to educate a child. There could be several children in each one of those houses. So I think that means we need to reevaluate our taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Any non-one? Mr. Chairman Lofton.
Chairman, move her adjourned.
Ms. to adjourn is our second. All those in favor of aye? Close enough. We'll stand adjourned. We thank everyone for their time and their input.